Hello everyone, I'm Rinna Sjortan. I'm a PhD candidate at the Department of Computer Science in NTNU and I work on visual computing for cultural heritage applications. Together with my colleagues Jan Ingve Hardberg and Sam George, we had the pleasure of organizing and sharing this special session, Deep Learning for Cultural Heritage. We will have two works highlighted in this session: one on automatic mapping of heritage sites in Norway and another one on semantic aware artist style transfer. But before the presentations, I want to give a brief introduction regarding the numerous applications of deep learning for cultural heritage. As it has been already mentioned in the panel so far in the conference, data explosion in various scientific domains has facilitated the use of deep learning techniques. And especially for cultural heritage, this data explosion is of particular magnitude and relevance. And this is partially because the cultural institutions and community in general have become more and more aware that cultural heritage is at risk and it is endangered by either natural disasters, political conflicts, or simply by their interesting nature, prone to natural aging and decay. Therefore, it is important to digitize the artworks. And one well-known example is the Notre Dame Cathedral. When the fire happened, all the documentations and digital data available has been gathered, including the 3D model that is used for rendering the cathedral in the computer game Assassin's Creed. So before doing any other analysis, it's important to have access to the digital data to document and preserve cultural heritage. Once this data is available, then the machine learning scientists can use their expertise to intervene and solve problems of the domain. For example, Rijksmuseum published a dataset of around 11,000 images and the tasks were mainly classification of the artists or the materials using the artworks creation here or, yes, materials. And this dataset includes a wide range of objects, from photographs to paintings to ceramics. More recently, at the ICCV workshop of a heritage in 2019, a dataset of wall paintings from a heritage site in the North China was released. It contains around 600 images and because these wall paintings are aging fastly, one important application is to be able to restore them at least virtually. So the task was to propose approaches for wall painting restoration using deep learning techniques. So after datasets are available and also together with the progress of deep learning techniques, then machine learning scientists and artists alike can become more creative and use deep learning techniques not only for preservation and documentation of cultural heritage and specification and restoration, but also for other more creative tasks, such as creating new artworks, so synthesizing new images or using image-to-image translation techniques to be able to propose scenarios regarding non-existing information in the original cultural heritage objects. So good example for this application is colorization, where we add color information in black and white photography. And usually this is done in generative adversarial networks and image-to-image translation. So here we have an example of a photo of a Norwegian bride. And with the DeoLify network, it's possible to visualize a scenario of how this image would have looked in real life. Another relevant example is the Oxyapalos AI Artist Collective Group. So it's a collective of artists and machine learning scientists that have the mission to resurrect lost art using AI techniques. So basically, one of their works was to extract the hidden work of one of Leonardo da Vinci's paintings. They found the sketches of an underpainting beneath Virgin on the rocks with X-ray and then they combined this with machine learning to be able to generate how this painting would have looked with full spatial and color information. And as a matter of fact, this proposal of the lost artwork is a new object in itself. So the owner of this artwork is the Artist Collective Group and it has featured at Nvidia 2020 Conference in the AI Art Gallery. So as a matter of fact, it's a trend now to have an AI art gallery in most of the conferences on computer vision. So CCUPR had such a panel and also ICCV and ICCV if I'm not mistaken. And last but not least, well, you can use AI to entertain yourself or to create your 18th century portrait as I did yesterday. So there is an app, you just download it on your phone, upload your photo and you can have your 18th century portrait and the technique behind is the style transfer.
Yeah, so this is a work that we did for the National Cultural Heritage Administration in Norway. And they are interested in mapping cultural heritage in forests because there are many cultural heritage remains that are still not mapped with good precision and so both when it comes to location and completeness. So this is one of those which they know very well. This is within a maintained cultural heritage park. This is a grave mound from the Viking Age. There are several in the background. Here are a few more. This is a pitfall trap that was used for deer hunting. And here is a carceral kill. These were used from around 1600 to about 1800. So they are not as old as the two other types. So the data that we have used is LiDAR data. So we have thrown away all the vegetation points and using only the ground points. And by using them, we can see things that are not visible in air photos. So I think I said this already, the main challenge was to develop an automatic processing chain that found all the cultural heritage objects and not too many of other things like natural terrain formations or modern constructions. So we looked at some different deep neural networks and we found out that faster R-CNN could be suitable for this purpose because the objects that we are looking for are quite compact. So a detailed shape like we can get from a SCNN is not necessary. We are mainly interested in the location and size. So all LiDAR data in Norway can be accessed from this site hoydata.no. And we used a visualization method, which is shown here to the right. So it emphasizes the local variations of elevation differences and so to speak, so also by the general terrain elevation. So only the local differences are used. In the middle is the hill shade, which is useful for humans to look at, but it's not very good for machine learning as there is a directional component here because of the light source from one side. So these are grave mounds. And then here are the pitfall traps. And there were also some carceral kills that could be shown similarly. There was one problem with the code. It crashed if there were no objects inside a window, which is the usual case when it comes to cultural heritage. Also, we had to use other classes than what the model was originally trained with. So this is what the method does. It locates the objects that we are interested in and gives a score, which is between 0 and 1. So we can set a threshold on the score. So if the score is lower than 0.7, we are not too interested. So these are some examples of what the method is able to find. So we used a processing chain to generate the local relief models that we used for detection and then fed those images through the neural network. And then we converted the detections to vector files that could be used in a GIS, as a map layer. And these are the locations that we used. So they are spread around southern Norway. And here are the names of the datasets. So they can be identified in this hoydata.no by these names. And here are some examples of what the method was able to find in purple. And then in cyan is the old mapping of the cultural heritage. So some places we see that the location is slightly wrong and some places we see that there is only a polygon which happens to contain some of them, some of the grave mounds, but not all of them. This is a problem when doing land use planning, that the current information might be misleading. This means that construction work might be stopped because they suddenly discover that there is something they have to preserve. So this is how we divided the data between training, validation and test, the three types of cultural heritage. And then we also wanted to see how the method was working in a more interesting setting, that is when we don't know what is there already. So we then looked at one municipality which had around 10 known locations before the project and after the project, they have now more than 500 locations that are detected by the method and some uncertain detections in addition. So if we do a test on the known locations and only include images which have cultural heritage location, then the method is able to find 87% of the two locations. And out of the predictions, 75% of them are correct, while 25% are false, something else than cultural heritage. Then if we look at the entire area of Larvik municipality and look for grave mounds, then we see that we only find 38% of them and we also have a lot of false positives. So then we looked at some of the missing detections and they are not visible in the LiDAR data at all because they have been removed by agriculture. There are only some minor remains below the soil. So this can be found by ground penetrating radar, for example, but that is a much more difficult method to find new locations. So this is only used when the archaeologists think that there is something there and they want to document it. And then for overager, we have manually inspected all these detections in the LiDAR visualizations. So 578 of the detections seem to be true, carceral kills. And then there are some uncertain and some that are clearly nothing. And these are visualized here. This is for the entire municipality. So all the colored dots are detected by the method. And then the cyan ones, they are confirmed. And then the blue ones, they are the ones that were missed by the method. And then the red are false positives. And then enlarged slightly for the southern half and the northern half of the municipality. And this is how some of them look like in the LiDAR data. And now they can be viewed in this internet site kulturminisert.no. So it's possible to get some information on each of these icons. And here are the references that we used. The last one here is the journal paper for this work. So that's why it will not appear in the proceedings because it has already been published. So that was all. Thank you for your attention.
Hi everyone, I'm George Rousell from INKEY. Today I will present you Steel Transfer Architecture for preserving artistic relevance. So I will just begin with few words about INKEY, which is a startup based in France. We specialize in immersive projection using artificial intelligence and precisely engineering with audiovisual production. Our main interest is about cultural heritage museums and we started in 2020. So today I will present a little bit about what is immersive projection and how we can use steel transfer in cultural mediation. Some word after about what is artistic relevance and how we can use this concept with steel transfer. Then I will present the architecture or how it works for using it in our case. Little words afterwards about some application to these architectures to photorealism. So some words about immersive projection. What is it? It's a projection of artworks at building scale. So it's really large scales. Here on the right, we can see the Atelier des Lumières in Paris, which projects artworks in a very large building. So these creations today are uncrusted creations. So it's really time consuming to make this type of exhibitions. It should be done exclusively for one place. So it's not really easy to adapt to other place. It's animated manually, so all this work is really time consuming. Also, it needs high resolution because of the surface we need to map. Because it's cultural mediation, you have to, you need to have relevant artistic content. So you can only use existing assets and should be the closest possible to the original artwork. So our goal is to develop better tools for artists to compose this original creation in less time. Some word about steel transfer. So steel transfer is a tool that could transfer a content into a given style. For example, here is a House of Parliament as a photo in the style of the House of Parliament from Monet. So the goal is to apply this to immersive projection. So steel transfer has the advantage to be relatively fast and adaptable to a lot of artworks. And we would like to apply it to artwork extension or create new artworks on the base of already existing paintings. But today, most of the style transfer techniques are not accurate enough for cultural mediation because they only transfer the general style and not as the painter would have painted it. And so we would like to talk about the artistic relevance concept because for us, one of the main problems of the current techniques is that they don't take into account this relevance. Today's steel transfer approach, there is a three steel transfer approach. First, the content focused, which will preferably transfer the contents but with less focus on the style. All the other were around, just still focused. So there is less importance of the contents of the picture, but more of the style. Our last approach is artist focused, which will train the neural network with only paintings of a given artist. But this still is partially relevant because we can see here, for example, for Monet, here is, there is sky or water. But even if it's the same painter, the water or the sky isn't represented exactly the same way. So it's really unique at each artwork. So for us, we will add some constraint to this relevance, so content and style, but also the object representation on the composition. So each element in the artwork will be represented, for example, for the water or the sky. And also the fine details, the artist stroke, which will let us know more about the techniques, the painting technique he used when he painted this artwork. So for us, we will need semantic awareness, the steel transfer architecture to have a better result. So the proposed architecture is a four-step architecture. First, as that I will detail just here after. First, the segmentation part. Then data augmentation and training for the semantic synthesis. Then the generation of an image with semantic synthesis. And lastly, the steel transfer to get the fine details. First, the segmentation part. We have a content image and a steel image. We need to have similar labels for similar objects. So for example, here, the building is in purple, the water in red, some reflection in blue, the sky in blue. So one of the main drawbacks here is that we need to have similar objects in the content and in the style image. But that's not the real program because here we want to transfer and create new artworks. So it must have the same elements as the original artwork. But one of the advantages of this technique is that the content can be only a mask because we do not need a real content image. This allows you to have new composition and fully new artworks in the style of the original picture. And then we want to use semantic synthesis, which needs supervised training. But we need larger dataset and we have only one image of this artwork. So it's not really easy. So for that, we need data augmentation. So what is data augmentation? You will take the steel image and the steel mask and make a lot of transformations, which has rotation, crop, deformations. And then with this new dataset, with only one image, you could train your semantic synthesis train. So here we use a spade for this segmentation. So for us, we consider that it's better to have a few good augmented images and a lot of bad labeled ones. On here, it's better for us because we only have only one image. Then the semantic synthesis part. So we are beginning with the content mask and we feed the semantic synthesis with this mask, which was trained with the steel mask, the steel image. So we have this input, this output, sorry. So we have the content and the general style of the painting. So we can preserve the composition and also the object representation. And then here it lacks a little bit of texture. So we will use a standard style transfer technique, which is here, a neural steel transfer. And this will add some texture on five details to the output. So this enables the artistic relevance of the final steel transfer. So just to show you the difference between the semantic synthesis output and the steel transfer, we can see there is a lot of details on stroke and there is no repetition of the texture as we can see on the semantic output synthesis. So here, a little benchmark to see how it compares to other techniques. So we can see that, for example, DVC-T2 or Asnaga are more content focused. So we have a good representation of the content, but not so much of the style. Zerozer are pretty good with the style, but it lacks of the style, the relevance, the artistic relevance here of the original painting. And how is really near from this original artwork? But here we want to have high resolution because we want to do it with large scale projection. So we will need to crop the image to have a full representation of the image. So we just use a crop of a light technique and a reference, sorry, a restriction after the transfer. So here's a full artwork. So we start from the House of Parliament as a photograph. We applied the whole process and get the never painted House of Parliament. So yeah, that's pretty cool. Now I will talk about a few words about what can we do with this architecture for photorealism. So this is still a ongoing work. Here we can have an input mask, which will represent a landscape, which is fully synthetic, which does not exist at all. We want to have high detail features in this picture. So here, some rocks or forest, I will show you some details after. We want to have high detail features in this picture. So here some rocks or forest, I will show you some details after. And for creating this landscape, we have only twenty-two labeled image from an HD video. So we can create a fully synthetic landscape from only few images. Here there is no final style transfer output, just to show you the raw output. So as you can see here, we can have pretty good details, for example, in the forest, but the rocks here are not so good. So one improvement that could be done here is to have segmentation, segmented steel transfer, which will allow to have independently each parts of the picture to be stillized because we can have some problem when we make the steel transfer on this kind of wall picture. So in conclusion, the architect represented is faster than uncrafted compositions that could take around few months to do. Here we can do it less than weeks or months if we want to go for a fuller exhibition. We can use it for high resolution, although fully synthetic composition, which is great for immersive projection. And last but not least, we can preserve artistry, which is one of the main goal of our work, be able to use it for cultural mediation.